I would like to call the September 5th, 2017 Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs?
Here.
Councilmember Bagley? Christensen?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Peck?
Santos?
Mayor, you have a call.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, hands to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess we'll start with what we'd invite to be heard. The first person on the list is...so you have three minutes to speak and please state your name and address for the record.
Ron Gaiagos, 424 Kimbark. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm here to speak about the Public Improvement Fund tonight specifically in regards to the Civic Center rehab number of over $7 million. In my previous life, I was a mortgage broker, commercial and residential, so I had a number of folks with a number of interesting ideas coming at me. One of the ideas especially that was intriguing was a particular project that involved a lot of rehab money for an old building. Old buildings are sort of like old cars. We get sentimentally attached to them, and I've got an old Mercedes C280, but it's at its stage in its life that every time I take it in, it requires 500 here, 500 there, 700 there, so it's like a money pit. It's losing proposition. I think we have, with the opportunity, when we talk about looking at the rehab of this particular building, to maybe looking outside the box. I made publicly some declarations that maybe we should think about buying the old Kmart site and really using that site because it's almost 100,000 square feet, about 97, and that's in its current configuration. You could easily double or triple the space there. Adequate parking, both in terms of the parking in front for the public and a gated parking area that would be secure. I think it would lend itself to a facility where you could have not only municipal offices, but the police department could have a branch site there as well as a branch library. That would go a long ways to begin to diffuse the traffic congestion that's involved in downtown. But sometimes I think, and Brighton went through this exercise, is it good to try and rehab an old building or just build a new one? Their conclusion was to build a new one. But we're folks talking about a lot of money here, and I would urge the council to give it a lot of thought. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else I'd like to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. So we'll move on to Special Reports and Presentation. So we have a proclamation designating the month of September as Attendance Awareness Month in Longmont, Colorado. And I think Regina Quintana Carne from the Mental Health Awareness Coordinator will be here to accept the proclamation. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating the month of September 2017 as Attendance Awareness Month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas good attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, and we are committed to dedicating our resources to reduce chronic absenteeism with a focus starting as early as kindergarten, whereas chronic absence, missing just two days of school a month for any reason is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. And whereas chronic absence predicts lower third grade reading proficiencies, course failure, and eventual dropout, which weakens our community and our local economy. Whereas the impact of chronic absence hits low-income students and children of color particularly hard if they don't have the resources to make up for lost class time and are more likely to face systematic barriers to getting to schools. And whereas chronic absence can be significantly reduced when schools, families, and communities work together to reach out to students, promote good attendance, and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Now therefore, I Dennis L. Coombs, Mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me in the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2017 as Attendance Awareness Month in Longmont and invite all citizens in the community to celebrate education for our future leaders. So would you like to say a few words?
I did bring a student and a coworker with me that wanted to talk about the importance
We just want to say on behalf of the Student Engagement and Attendance Department and the School District, we'd like to thank City Council for recognizing Attendance Awareness Month. By recognizing this month, you're partnering with the School District and addressing one of the most important factors that students have to success. And we were proud to bring with us a student who has just shown incredible growth with attendance, and so we thought we'd give him just a quick second to talk about how important attendance is.
So, so attendance, attendant is important because like, girl, like going into freshman year, it was hard for me in eighth grade to get, like, go to school and get caught up with my work, and so I like had this person trying to get me bus passes to go to school early in the morning, and I don't know, it just didn't work out, so this person, like, I don't know, I don't remember her name, but she was helping me, and yeah, it never worked, but then I joined the Jump Start, which is these lovely ladies, and the Jump Start was really good. It got me a credit ahead, and then they had me in like another program. It was called like guided study at my home high school, and it was pretty much a cushion if I was late or didn't like go for that period, and it was pretty good if I was late or anything, and yeah. And then just trying to get to school, like realizing that I have to get to school, I actually grew a lot because now me and, I'm at the CDC taking college course classes, and now I'm in pre-calc, and yeah, I'm just taking, I'm trying to work on my attendance in my bigger classes are in the first, like are my first periods, so I'm really working on getting there on time. So, yeah.
Okay, now I guess it's time to introduce our budget presentation.
Mayor, Council, we're going to start off the budget presentation with Joanne Zias going over the compensation plan and the recommendations. Joanne?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Wanted to start the budget presentations with talking about compensation. It tends to be a little bit of a piece of our budget and has an impact on most of the employees that work here. Just as a reminder, our compensation philosophy, this has been pretty consistent since I've been here anyway. The present, the philosophy says that the city will try to, will strive to pay competitive market rates. And the thought process with that is that we want to make sure that we are matching both the private industries for positions where we have competition in the private industries or competitive rates with other cities for positions that may just be city-based. Last year, we had talked about the fact that we do have lower numbers of staff members compared to the services we offer when we look at other cities. So one of the goals that we've had is to try to get to 102% of market, just slightly over what the market rate is, largely in recognition that our employees do provide an extra value-added service in many of those areas. We were not able to do that last year with the 102% of market, but it was recognized at that point as a goal. Some compensation commitments that we had made to council as well as to the employees is that we would always take a look at what our market midpoint pay is and look at other organizations and look at private industry to see what is that midpoint. We do look at each position on an individual basis, and we want to make sure that we're competitive, we're also fiscally responsible, and we're also sustainable with what we're presenting as a plan so that we can afford it on an ongoing basis. Relatively new, about two years old, is putting in some criteria to reward employees who are really going exceptionally above and beyond in their roles. So we had extraordinary performance that was added in 2016's budget. These are some salary sources that we use. These are relatively consistent year over year. We do try to hone them a little bit each year by making sure that we have the right, the right subset of each one. We did this year take a look at can we make it a little bit more streamlined to just the local area, and when we did that, we had a little bit of a challenge making that, making the market comparison. So we did try to stick with these surveys. Some additional surveys that we use, Career Builders, relatively new, that's about two years old, and we do use validated government surveys in there. This is a little bit small, but what it says is that the survey results, when we take a look at it by job classification, we're finding that we are relatively competitive with our market and the salaries that we're paying. So the overall, when you look at the citywide compared to the market midpoints, we're almost right on the dot, we're 100.01%, and you do see some of those numbers slightly over, some of them slightly under when you get into the more specific categories. We have three recommendations for 2018 increases. What we're seeing in the market at large is that the average increase is running between 3% and 3.5%, but the average range increase is 1.7. So the first recommendation that we have is just to match the market since we're at 100.01. If the market's anticipating 1.7, then 1.7 is probably the number that we'd be looking to move our ranges. In addition, we are recommending that this year we go ahead and start to move towards that 102. We recommended doing half of that this year. So the second recommendation is that there's an additional 1% to move into that 101% for range. The third recommendation we have is largely based on that exceptional pay piece that we had. We've been allocating 1% of budget for exceptional pay. What we're finding is that as we're having conversations with directors and with departments, 1% of pay is very, very hard to be able to spread through with the exceptional performance that they're finding. So there's a recommendation to add an additional 1% to that pool that would give departments 2% of budget to be able to allocate to those exceptional performers. Some additional recommendations, and these are more process, we would be looking at doing a lump sum bonus if somebody is at or above the market midpoint because of market fluctuations. We do find sometimes because we are basing on market that positions could decrease, and if they are decreasing on a regular basis, we do decrease the market. We wouldn't want somebody to bring that home in their take-home pay, but we also wouldn't want to keep increasing their pay in those situations. So what we would do is a lump sum in those cases, and that's consistent with past practice. The recommendation for that is 2.7%, and what that really does is just matches the range movement and also matches that additional 1% that we're recommending. If individuals are below market, consistent with prior years, we would allow increases of base pay of up to 5% as long as that's not exceeding the market. Collective bargaining is already built into contracts, so these are what are agreed-to provisions for collective bargaining in 2018. LPC step positions, we did the same process that we did for our open-range positions, so those were adjusted to stay competitive with existing labor markets. We were finding that those positions were pretty consistent on target as well, so those are averaging about 2.7 also with the increases. We are recommending a minor change to the ranges. Several years ago, our ranges were going from 90 to 110%. We found that that was not sustainable. We dropped that to 107 this year because of moving our market to 101. We're recommending that we just move that to 108, and we find that that should be an attainable goal, and that will allow us to continue the 7% range for exceptional performance. This is just a little bit more detail on the extraordinary performance, so it would be adding that 1% of pool. This is an annual increase, so individuals do have to earn it and retain it on an annual basis. So what that means is that it would be added to their pay. However, if they don't earn it in the next year, then they would not receive an increase that year until they were back down to market or earned exceptional pay again in a future These are some requirements. These have been consistent since we started extraordinary pay two years ago. What we're really looking for is individuals that are making some significant contributions to either citywide or division projects or work plans, consistently exceeding expectations. So the thought is that everyone is expected to give good service, period. Extraordinary pay is really going above and beyond that baseline and really doing something that's exceptional. We do have several criteria. If people are meeting one criteria and doing a great job, then they can move up slightly. If they have meet additional criteria, then they can continue to move up.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Can you go back just one, please?
Yes.
What, when it says, can you tell us what the additional criteria are?
Sure, so those were those last slides, so let me go back a minute. Oh, one more. So if they were just succeeding expectations, you might have somebody that's doing their job, but they're doing it exceptionally. That's one criteria. If they're making significant contributions on a citywide basis, then that would be an additional criteria, so these would be additive.
We like that.
Say that again?
We like that.
In the future, the target is still 102. We certainly don't feel that we should be recommending that this year, but given that the amount of individual work that people do and the staffing levels, we think 102 is probably still an appropriate target in the future. We also would like to incorporate additional data sources in our market review. We do plan next year to take a look with each department in regard to what is the market that we're using, what benchmark are we using, and is it correct?
Sure. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Should we go back one more slide?
Yeah.
So this is always the difficult part every year because it's the only time during the year that I look at all the employees, and it's the council, basically, you know, the boss, talking to the people that we write paychecks for. And so I always go back to my office, and I'm thinking, okay, well, what would I tell my staff if they were sitting here and they were making a presentation? Essentially, the presentation is, you should pay us 2% more than everybody else. Why?
So there's two reasons. One would be that the service expectation is very high here. Two would be that when we look at comparable cities, what we're finding is that we have similar staffing levels to other cities, but we're providing a lot more services. So things like sanitation don't exist in many other cities. Electric services don't exist in a lot of cities. We broadband service is very unique to our city. So if we're matching their staffing levels, we're providing a great service level, and we are able to do those additional services without additional staff, we feel that that's inappropriate.
Let me, let me jump in here. So it's also not, it's also not necessarily 2% more than everyone else. So when we talk about midpoint, what we're looking at is you take the low end of the range and the high end of the range, and then you factor in that midpoint, and you say, here's where we are. We know that there's a number of cities that come into the midpoint that actually pay above 102%. So there are certain cities that we could point to that they're probably at 106 or 108, and we can say, this is 100, this is 102 of the midpoint we established, which is not above everyone in the, all the other cities.
Got it, so your argument is, so, so what you're basically saying is that as we look at everybody else, there's some below, some will still be above, but you think that if 2% above the midpoint, that is an appropriate place for Longmont to land, taking into our account our services, the quality of our work product, et cetera.
And I think one of the things you also have to talk, talk about when you look into this, and we've had a lot of discussion, is, is you also have to look at the number of services we provide and how that compares to other cities, but the other piece, the other piece that you have to take into account is you also look at our staffing levels. So if council, we're a member, and I think Councilmember Peck was on the council when we talked about this the first time or early on, is we actually looked at our staffing levels compared to a lot of the jurisdictions that we benchmark ourselves against, and we tended to be on the lower end of those staffing levels. So what we were finding was that we were consistently seeing, and this is going to sound, I truly believe our work product is better than a lot of the cities that we rank ourselves on, and everyone in my position will say the same thing, but I think that's a point of it. You look at the fact that we're doing it with fewer employees, and, and then the demands that we place on it in terms of just the cross-training that we do throughout the organization, where employees aren't doing just one thing. And the folks that work, that we work with in our organization, we train them to do multiple aspects of the organization. So if you look at our water, some of our technical folks in our water and wastewater system, one of the adjustments that we made in that system, and I bring this because we talk about rates and what are we doing to control those rate structures. Instead of having technical folks both in the wastewater system and both in the water system, what we've done is really consolidated those positions, so they're trained to operate both. When you combine that with the automation that we've brought in, we've actually reduced our staffing, but they're doing as much if not more work than they were doing with the higher headcount. And so that's very much part of what we do as an organization.
Okay, and just one last question. I just out of curiosity, how many people have quit this year from Longmont versus how many were let go? What was our turnover?
Our turnover is actually, it's a little over 4%, but we're not all the way through the year at this point, so I would expect at the end of the year, we're probably going to be hit about 7, maybe 8%.
Okay, and that 4%, of that 4%, if you could break it down, how many were let go versus how many quit?
We have very few terminations, so most of the time it is individuals that are leaving.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So when you calculate a midpoint, is that calculation done as an average of the data or a median of the data?
So it actually takes the salary ranges. It does not take actual salaries, and we take, we take the middle, the midpoint of that directly. So we take the highest and the lowest and divide it by two.
Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. With the 4%, are you also, is that 4% in, does that also include retirements?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. Okay. So just to segue into benefits, I know Jim's going to talk about this a little bit more detailed. We do have Kaiser continuing our health care benefit next year. We got an increase of 5.5%. You may recall last year, we had a flat rate for Kaiser. The average in the marketplace is 6.5. We probably would have hit that last year except we did get a rate guarantee last year with the zero increase. We are trending very well with Kaiser. Over the past 11 years, we're hitting 3.85% as an increase average. That's probably, I don't want to say half, it's probably a little bit more than half of what the market, but it's well below what the market is. And we've been able to manage that without any reduction in plan provisions, and actually last year, you may recall, we were able to add provisions even without having an increase. We added hearing aids and chiropractic care, which we did not have before. We also have had a minimal increase to our vision. They gave us a 4% increase, but they are going to hold that rate for three years, and we have no increase on our dental and our other benefit plans, so looking relatively positive in the benefit side. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim for some more details.
Excuse me. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. You mentioned that there was no, no change in the dental, but when I was going through the budget, I noticed that in 2017 and 2018, there's no provision for dental provided. Is that because we don't know what it is at this point, or that we aren't going to? I think Jim's going to answer that.
Coombs, members of council, we are budgeting that all out of one line item now. We had separated a couple of years ago because we had a separate dental trust fund when we were self-insured for dental, so since we're no longer self-insured, we pay that all out of the health benefit fund. So we tied that all into one line item in the budget, and so you see no expense on dental anymore. I think if it only says health on that line item, it really should be health and dental that is now being paid out of one line item into the health benefit trust fund.
Okay, thank you for that.
Well, dental is part of health, you know, if you don't have good dental thing, you can't have good health.
So we're not making any adjustments to, to those other benefits in terms of ending a coverage. We're continuing that as we have in previous years.
Councilmember Christensen?
Is Kaiser still providing some form of hearing coverage?
Yes, they are. We added that last year, and we will continue that this year.
Okay.
Is there any more questions on?
No, don't see any. Thank you.
So I think what, while the PowerPoint's getting up, I'm really just going to segue here a little bit further on the same discussion, a little more on, on health benefits. No, actually, it's not. That's it. And the council communication included a little bit of a look at our health benefit funds. I wanted to go over that, and really, the question I just answered talked about our funding being for health and dental, and actually- our funding being for health and dental, and actually, it's greater than that. It's really all of our, our benefits that I'm going to be identifying here that come out of that fund. We've already talked about most of this, but I'll come up here. These are all the benefits that we're paying out of that fund besides just health and dental. We also have wellness incentive costs for $65,000. We have OPEB liability, that's other post-employment benefits, and that's the subsidy that we have for our retirees' health benefits cost. $46,000 for police and fire physicals. So, no, let me back up here. Go there. Yeah. So, all of our, because of the fact that our, our health benefits cost has been contained so well, we are, have the ability to actually decrease the amount of contributions that we're making to the health benefit fund. And it's really a factor of, of the increase in our compensation as well that is driving that. So we had 16.7% of our compensation going into the health benefit fund, the city's contribution to cover all of those benefit costs the city share. There are also employee contributions to the fund, as well as retiree contributions for their benefits. That, we were able to decrease that to 16% for a couple of different reasons. One is we've really been estimating too high and contributing a little bit too much. Secondly, we've been able to control that cost as Joanne outlined with these limited-to-no increases in some of these benefit costs. And, and then finally, it's the increase as well in the staffing and/or the overall pay for employees that is allowing us to actually reduce this. I think the highest amount of contributions we made in the past was about 17.5% of pay. We're able to reduce it to 16%, and then if you look at the pro forma that are included within the council communication in attachment A, you'll see that, in fact, we are projecting that we'll still have a bit of an operating surplus in, in 2018 as a result of this level of funding. And so we will be ending up with a, a fund balance at the end of this year of over $7 million, and we will be maintaining that level a little bit higher, a couple hundred thousand, possibly higher, at the end of 2018. So we're able to, to get by this, and as, in turn, it's going to have an impact that I'll bring up a little bit here in a few more minutes on the pension fund as well. So, getting moving away from that health benefits now, and beginning to talk about our defined benefit plans. And first, I want to talk about two old hire, police and fire plans. These two plans are closed plans, they have, each have 10 or, 10 or less participants now. All retirees or beneficiaries, and there are no actives left in either one of these funds. In recent years, both of these, these plans had a surplus in their balance, and basically all their liabilities were covered with the assets in place. In the last year, in 2016's results, or actually 15's results, that were measured beginning of 16, was the first time in a few years that the police plan had an unfunded liability. The old hire-fire plan has a negative unfunded liability, meaning it has a surplus. Again, now, at the beginning of 17, we just received these results last month, we find that the old hire-fire plan is, is well-funded at 110.8%. The police plan dropped a little bit to 89.7%. This is all a factor of, we made the contributions that are required when they are required, if we do fund, have an unfunded liability, and it really is a factor of the, the investment returns and the mortality for the participants. And, and actually, since the police plan was measured at the beginning of the year, there is a loss in, in one of the, the numbers. So that, that will actually have an impact going forward to, for that unfunded liability to the positive, so. The general employees retirement plan, we talked about this each year, it has had an unfunded liability since the market decline in 2008. I think we began to measure that unfunded liability in 2009. It's required us to do some increases in our contributions over time. We also made some changes in the policy, the funding policy for this plan that were decided about a year ago, which would change the amortization period to a closed 30-year period. The impact of that was an increase in cost, but it does also make it so that we're actually able to amortize that, that unfunded liability over a decreasing amount of time instead of a rolling 30-year period, which is what we were looking at in the past. So, in turn, it does sometimes, it will require us at times to have potential contribution increased requirements. It also depends, again, as I said before, on our investment performance. So far this year, the, the plans have performed well, still got a ways to go though, till the end of the year. You know, the goal for each of these three plans is try to get them all to full funding, and it's for a couple of different reasons. One is that we can't do retiree benefit increases unless the plan is in a surplus. That's a, that's a table law. We're not allowed to increase a multiple-year fiscal obligation without a vote of the citizens, unless it's fully funded. And a retirement plan, a defined benefit retirement plan is, is considered just that. And so unless that plan is over 100% funded, there can't be increases to retiree benefits. And that's because we do not have a cost of living factor built into our retirement plans, which is a good thing from the city's perspective, and it's why we're well-funded as a public plan. From the retirees' perspective, they won't get an increase unless we're in a position where we're over 100% funded. So I say we're well-funded, our actuary always tells us we're very well-funded for public plans, and comparatively, we are. If you've seen other percentages, if you see para and, and different percentages nationwide, they're nowhere near 90% funding. But I think our goal should be to get us to 100% so that we can, and beyond, so that we can ensure all those benefits are going to be paid in the long run, and maybe even be able to do some increases to those retirees' benefits, which haven't really been done in, since like 2009. So our funding policy that we, that I explained before, it increased our, our contribution requirement at the end of last year from 11.77% to 11.9%. And then the actual impact of the 2006, 2016 results began 2017 with an unfunded liability of 12.7 million, moving us to 91.8% funded. And our contribution requirement from there rose from 11.9% to 12.3% of compensation. That's employee and employer contributions. We do have, in the actuarial world, what we do is, when there are losses, we turn around and we smooth those over five years, so we don't recognize them all at once if the impact isn't as momentous. And so what we end up doing is we've got deferred losses from, general employees retirement plan was historically fully funded until 2008. So, and again, as I mentioned already about the, the benefit impact, about not being fully funded. So our recommendation and our attempt is to begin to, or to continue to try to move this over time to be full-funded. So, the proposed budget does include an increase in the city's contribution requirement from 7.2% of compensation to 7.7%. We are not recommending an increase in the employee contribution requirement, which is at 5.8%, and that actually is for what we call tier-one employees, which is previous to 2012, I believe. Tier-two employees are since that time, the benefits are a little bit reduced for tier-two employees, they have a contribution requirement, one full percentage point less than, than a 4.8% compared to the amount for the tier-one employees. So it's actually a blended percentage, it's getting closer to somewhere in between there, probably, let's say, 5.3%. So our overall contribution will be close to 13% in, in 2018, which is in excess of what that requirement was out of the last actuarial study. Reason why we're not recommending an increase for the employees is that this half-percent increase in the, in the city's contribution is actually not quite offsetting the 0.7% increase in the health benefit plan. So, in a sense, the city's contribution towards these two benefits, we're netting actually a reduction of 0.2% compared to, in turn, we decided not to ask the employees to, to contribute an increased amount from their end of things, at least not in, in 2018's budget. And the estimated city cost impact in 2018 for this increase of a half-percent is about $230,000, and about 50% of that is from the general fund. I think that's right. Any other questions on the retirement plans or any benefits that we covered to this point?
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. The other thing that I noticed in going through the budget was that there was no leave expense. Does that also come out of the same type of fund that the dental does? Is that part of a health fund? No employee leave from 2017?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, so employee leave is, so we budget employees' compensation in full in the salary and wages line item. So we're, the whole 2,080 hours for an employee is, is budgeted that, that cost in that line item, and the actual cost for leave, when someone actually does incur leave, is charged to that leave line item. It doesn't have a budget to it, but it's more than covered because of the fact that the salary and wages is, is budgeted in a, in the other line item. So there's no reason, it's, it's hard to estimate the leave, you don't know who's going to take it, where it is, in, across all of our different budget services, so instead, we just budget the full amount in salary and wages.
Okay. I understood that. It's just that if anybody looks at that budget and they see nothing there, it looks as though we are no longer going to fund it for 2017, 2018. So, thanks for that explanation.
I was just curious, how many municipalities in Colorado have defined benefit plans versus don't have them? You know, do a lot of cities now have more like, you know, the equivalent of a 401K plan with employer matching amounts, or are we unique, or are there a lot of cities like us that have defined? I was just curious.
Well, Mayor Coombs, I would say, we're not totally unique, but more, more of the entities in, or cities in Colorado are, are going the 4, or have gone the 401K-type route than defined benefit anymore. I think it's, it's, it's in the minority. There are entities that are participating in para, so that's, that's happening at both municipal and county levels, as well statewide. So they're in defined benefit plans. We're unique because there's not a lot of, of cities that operate their own defined benefit plan necessarily, or not as many, but there are still some. But you're right, we are in the minority there.
Okay, thank you.
Moving away from benefits and compensation, and we're going to be talking about the CIP now. We have a number of staff that are here to present on that. I'm going to begin by talking about the Public Improvement Fund, and then turn it over to Teresa, and I think she's going to introduce other folks that will be taking the lead on covering some of the major projects within the 2018, 2022 CIP. We've talked to you earlier this year about the, the Public Improvement Fund, and we did talk in particular about the Civic Center project and the needs, the increase in the cost of that project and the impact it would have on the Public Improvement Fund. Made some changes in March or April this year that the council approved, where we increased that cost for the Civic Center project, and in turn deferred some of the costs that were already budgeted for the Civic Center into future years, and to include it as part of, of the proposed bond that we talked about in the beginning last year in, in the CIP process, and have talked about a few times since then. So, the bond issue that funds the Quail Campus and Roosevelt Park projects will pay off in May of 2019. So last year, we proposed a $26.5 million bond that we would propose to issue in 2019 to fund the infrastructure repair and replacement projects. So that actually, it would be schemed so that it would begin to have its payments made in 2020, our first full year without any payments from the prior bond. But we could begin to initiate those projects in 2019, assuming we went to sale during 19. So the changes that we've had between last year's CIP and this year's CIP is we increased the Civic Center rehabilitation project by 2.4 million for the repairs that were deferred earlier this year. We changed the scope and cost of some of the golf projects that were in, originally scoped for that proposed bond, they decreased by $348,000. We proposed the bond to be increased to $28.58 million, again, still scheduled for 2019, but again, now for this larger amount than the $26.5 million that we are talking about last year. So that in turn changed our debt service estimates, as well as we are now, since we're a little bit closer to 2019, we're using a little bit more aggressive or less conservative interest rate, if you will. And so that in turn has an impact on our future debt service payments that we have worked into this five-year CIP. So the debt service changes from last year's estimate of 2.075 million a year to now, this year, we're estimating it 2.23 million a year, again, beginning in 2020. So these are the projects that, that have no change in them. These are the same projects and same dollar amounts that we brought to you in the 2017 to 21 CIP. A couple of fire station projects, the Safety and Justice Center rehabilitation, library building rehabilitation, and then the facilities condition assessments and rehab for other city buildings. These, these are the changes that are, are making up the rest of the bond project. The Civic Center rehab, I mentioned that before, increasing by 2.4 million. The Ute Creek Maintenance Facility, new dollar cost with the new estimates of going from 1.1 million to 1.47 million. Twin Peaks Irrigation System, increasing from 2.4 to 3.1 million. Sunset Irrigation, is it decreasing from 954,000 to 855,000? And then the Golf Irrigation Rehabilitation Replacement Project, that decreased from 1.6 million to $290,000. So these irrigation projects all had some interplay amongst each other that, that impacts that cost. That's the best explanation I can give you, but I know Larry Mills is here to give you a more extensive one if you need that. Then the Centennial Pool renovation project increased slightly by about $25,000.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So the golf irrigation rehab and replacement, how is that different from the Twin Peaks irrigation, Sunset irrigation? We've got irrigation, 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 and what are we getting for the golf irrigation?
I'm going to let Larry address that.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmembers Larry Mills, Golf Operations Manager. If I understand your question correctly, you're asking about the difference between the Twin Peaks irrigation system, the Sunset irrigation system, and the golf irrigation rehab and replacement, is that correct?
Well, yeah, the first two are pretty self-explanatory, what the money's going for, the third one is not.
The main cost of the golf irrigation rehab and replacement is replacing the control system at Ute Creek, which is now, or just, it just turned 20 years old, so that's the...
Why isn't it called the Ute Creek Controller, Irrigation Controller Replacement Project?
That's, the Ute Creek control system is part of it, and then there... That's, the Ute Creek Control System is part of it, and then there's costs going on in years to keep up with replacing irrigation components.
At Ute Creek?
At all three courses.
Okay. It's not very clear, and I think we need to readjust what we're calling that as a title so that we are more transparent to the public. So we really probably need to break that up. Also, the Ute Creek Maintenance Facility going up by 300,000, what's up with that?
I guess the simple answer is, once we were getting closer to having a funding source, we refined the costs and went into more details of the cost. For years, some of these projects have been in the CIP. I think that the Ute Creek Maintenance Facility was in the CIP since Ute Creek was built, and once we got closer to funding sources, we spent more time, got into more details of what the actual costs were. So the project didn't go up in costs, it was just better cost accounting.
Right. So basically, the design just got more firm, so that gave you better cost numbers? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, Mayor Coombs, we were using some rough square footage costs, and once we identified the funding source, within the next few years, we spent more time, got into more details, square footage, finishes, and so forth.
Thank you.
I think on the maintenance facility, when we look at a facility that we're building now with the police and museum storage, the number's pretty similar to what that cost would be based on an actual that we're building today. And in general, it's going to be a very similar facility.
Hi. For the Civic Center Rehabilitation, that's about, well, it's almost a 30% raise. Is that because we decided that there were, we found out there were so many more structural problems with the garage? Or what is, or the materials went up, or the labor went up? What is, what was the cause of that? I know it was partly the delay, but...
Looking back here at Public Works, no, he doesn't. Oh, there's Jeff. Okay. But yeah, this is based on the changes to the project that we brought to you earlier this year. So what's being deferred into 2019 is projects that were already budgeted to be done with dollars that were already budgeted. But I'll let Jeff explain, because it's because of the new cost that came up this year for this building, and I'll let Jeff get into it.
One more question, though. On page 17, you have something called Community Services Specialized Equipment, which is $2 million over four years. Could you explain after he's done what that is?
Actually, that's on the next slide or two, anyway.
Mayor, council, this is Jeff Cedar. I'm the CIP and Facilities Manager. So if I understand the question correctly, the cost increase for Civic Centers is what you're asking?
Yes, because it's pretty substantial, and I'd just like to refresh my mind about why.
The original cost estimates had no inclusion for repairs to the slab. At the time, the structure was deemed to be minimal in repairs, so the additional cost is to make repairs to that slab.
Okay. That explains it, because it's, that's huge. Okay. Thank you.
So, other steps that we had to take with the Public Improvement Fund, we had to do some deferrals of some projects in order to be able to balance the fund over five years because of the cost increases for the debt service and also for the projects, the sales tax estimates that we used for the five-year period of time. So we had to reduce two projects from what we had originally or brought to you and funded, as funded in 2017 through '21. And one of those was the Community Services Specialized Equipment Project. We reduced that by $120,000 in both 2019 and 2020. And the second project was the Swimming and Waiting Pool Maintenance. We reduced that by $250,000 in 2019 and $120,000 in 2020. Now, this is a five-year CIP. In '21 and '22, we did restore the same level of funding for both of these projects because those are two years where we had more ability to address those needs. So those were deferred into future years of the CIP. But I'm asking Jeff Freezen to come on up here and address your question about the Community Services Specialized Equipment. And if you have other questions about either one of these two projects, he can probably answer that as well.
Mayor, members of council, Jeff Freezen, Recreation and Golf Manager. The Community Services Specialized Equipment is our replacement CIP that replaces equipment specific to our service to customers, and that has a wide range of things from our department, from examples, our window blinds at the library, tables and chairs at the senior center in recreation, that replaces all of our fitness equipment and those sorts of things. And then the second part, so we've been asked to push out some of what we had originally budgeted in 2018 and 2019, and based on that happening, the recreation staff is going to need to go back and reprioritize what we had, what we will have budgeted for those two years, and then we will decide what can be pushed out to the outer years, and we'll do that for both PB145 and PRO102. Any questions?
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. You know, in none of this budgeting do I see the Roosevelt Ice Rink. Am I missing that somewhere, or have we not gotten any kind of estimates for that? Is that not going to be in the budget?
That's actually included in this year's budget.
In the 2017?
The repair of the slab that we had to issue, yeah, I think. You want to give them an update on that?
Yeah.
So we're doing that in this budget.
In 2017, okay.
Yes, we're in the process of finalizing the bid agreement. The contractors have from September 11th through September 29th to get the work done, and that will allow the ice rink to start being put up shortly after the 1st of October, which is about our normal time, and we have every intention, based on what we know tonight, to open up in mid-November like we usually do.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So in that last project, we did additional appropriation for that, I believe, we're ready to address that, so. So, final comment here, again, just to repeat that the bond issue would need to go on the proposed ballot for November of 18 in order to continue to stay on schedule to begin to address these projects in 2019. I think as well, I wanted to make a couple of other points. One is that, you know, there's a number of projects that are unfunded. When you look through the CIP and the Public Improvement Fund, the staff did bring forward earlier in the last month or two, I think in July, David Stern's brought forward the First and Main project, and the funding for that was targeted to somehow come from the Public Improvement Fund, so shown as an unfunded project, I believe, out of the Public Improvement Fund. We have been able to address that partially at least, and it would be a budget amendment. It's not really actually going to be part of the 2018 budget, but last year, we, with the sale of the cheese importers, we were able to generate about $950,000, some of which has been spent, but we were using that towards the museum storage facility. We also in turn, since the public buildings' community investment fee was ended in early May or so of 2016, there are a number of projects or permits that were still subject to that fee that have continued to come in over the last year or more since that fee was terminated that we did not budget for. And so we have dollars in the public building community investment fee fund that are available, but they're available for limited use because of the fact that those are tied for, only for projects that are tied to growth. And so a lot of the Public Improvement Fund projects are not necessarily tied to growth, and so a lot of them are dealing with rehabilitation, replacement, roofs, things like that. But the museum storage facility and the police evidence project actually does qualify for that, and so what we're proposing, instead of using what we have is about $900,000 left from the project for the sale of the cheese importers, we're proposing to not utilize that for the museum and police building project, but instead use the public buildings' community investment fee fund for that purpose. It's dollars that is, that are available from '16 and '17, so it really would take an additional appropriation of CIP amendment probably to allow for that. Freeze up $900,000 that staff was thinking would naturally, with the cheese importers, where's that? At First and Main. So that, maybe that might be a logical use of those funds to go towards that project. That's $900,000, I believe, over time, we were needing over $4 million for that project. So that's just the first step, I guess, in trying to get that funded, but that would be a recommendation, which you don't see that in the proposed 2018 budget because it really isn't a part of that budget. So I think we're going to move into the other aspects of the CIPs, and then turn it over to Teresa from here.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and councilmembers. Teresa Malloy, Budget Manager. And as Jim had mentioned, we do have several staff here this evening who are going to give you updates on our projects and our proposed 2018 to 2022 CIP. Before they come up here, I did have just a few overview slides to give you the big picture of our CIP, and these were included in the council communication. They're also included in the CIP document. And so this basically shows the full five years, the costs for the full five years by category of projects. And as you can see, transportation over these upcoming five years is the largest cost at $55 million. And then that's followed by parks, recreation, and open space, and then public buildings and facilities, and finally, water. Those are our top four categories that have the highest cost over the five-year period. This is a slide that just shows that same five-year period, but by year. So 2018, 2019 are both around $60 million, and then that tapers off as we move into 2020 and beyond. And this final slide I have for you this evening is the same format you just saw in the slide, two slides ago, only this is just what's included in our 2018 budget alone, not the full five years. And so, again, transportation at $11.7 million is, has the highest cost, followed by water, and then drainage, and finally, parks, recreation, and open space. So those are the top four in just 2018. So I am going to now turn it over to the rest of the staff to present to you on the actual projects that we're proposing for funding in 2018. They can certainly answer any other questions that you may have on any of the unfunded projects, but their main focus is going to be on the funded projects. So we're going to start with Brian McGill, and he's going to talk to you about the broadband and electric projects. And then we're going to have Rob Spindel from Public Safety come up and talk to you about a fire station improvement project, followed by two folks from Community Services, Jeff Freezen and Larry Mills. Jeff did touch on a couple of the projects he was going to talk to you about this evening, but they also have a couple other golf projects they want to talk to you about. And then we're going to have Sandy come up and talk to you about the council chamber remodel project. And then finally, the big bulk of the presentations are going to be Public Works and Natural Resources. They are the biggest builders of our capital improvement program projects, and so Dale will come up and his staff will wrap up the evening for you. There is one project that we are proposing as funded, and that is the Vance Brand Airport Improvement Project. We don't plan on having a presentation on that this evening, but David Slater will be here in a couple weeks to talk about the airport fund in its entirety, and he will touch on that project at that time. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Brian McGill, utility rate analyst for Longmont Power and Communications. I'm here tonight to present LPC's portion of the proposed 2018 to '22 CIP budget. So I'm going to start off by showing an overall summary of LPC's five-year CIP budget, which includes the electric and broadband utilities, as well as the electric community investment fee fund. For the most part, our CIP budgets consist of the same projects every year, and this holds true for this five-year CIP plan as well. As you can see, the electric utility has proposed CIP budget of $3.5 million for 2018, and this is made up of the same six projects we have every year, which are the electric feeder underground conversion, substation upgrades, electric system reliability improvements, street lighting program, advanced metering, and electric aid to construction. The broadband utility proposed budget of $1.7 million consists of two projects, broadband aid to construction and broadband fiber construction and installations. And the electric community investment fee proposed budget of $1.3 million for next year is also made up of two projects, and those are the electric system capacity increases and the substation expansion. And the substation expansion project is the major project we would like to discuss in further detail tonight. And so the electric substation project is the expansion required at our electric substations as a result of new growth and redevelopment throughout LPC service territory. And the $1 million included in the 2018 proposed CIP budget will be used to purchase an additional substation transformer. And in the past several years, we have shown this as an unfunded amount. However, with the predicted load forecast and the known development occurring in the southwest and southeast areas of the city, we have decided that this is the time to fund this project. And so depending on customer requirements, the additional transformer could be needed at the County Line Substation, the Fordham Substation, or the Rogers Road Substation. And the plan is to continue monitoring load data at these substations, as well as the pricing for an additional substation transformer, to determine if the transformer will go under contract in late 2018 with a delivery sometime in mid to late 2019. However, if it is determined that the need is not there yet, then this funding will just be carried over into 2019. And that's all I had. Thank you. If there's any questions or comments at this time?
I don't see any, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Rob Spindel, Public Safety Support Services Deputy Chief. Mayor Coombs, members of council, Rob Spindel, Public Safety Support Services Deputy Chief. I don't have a PowerPoint or anything for you, so I've got one project. Basically, this project is ongoing funding for capital improvements in the stations. Big fire trucks tend to cause damage to parking lots and driveways and HVAC systems. Our facilities at the fire stations are 24/7/365. With that, wear and tear, there tends to be repairs that we can't always foresee. There are two projects that we're looking to do in 2018 with the initial lump of money on 2018, and that is to pave the current driving path that we have at the training center and also convert one of the existing facilities to a classroom facility. The reason for that, we're hoping, is to reduce costs. Right now, our officers go down to either Flat Rock or CSP for driver's training. That takes a tremendous amount of resources and funding to do that. Hopefully, this will take and put us on an alternating schedule for that, so we won't incur such that heavy cost every year like we do currently. The other part is for the classroom facilities. We do find that trying to extend our dollars and stay on the cutting edge of our technology and our methods that we use, we do a lot of hosting of classes and get seats offered to us by providing facilities. Currently, in the Safety and Justice Center with that facility being the EOC and having internal trainings, it's just getting tougher and tougher to find that space. This would give us an opportunity to have a facility, and we can do more of this, as well as for our staff and not have travel time. Right now, we have classroom stuff, we're doing that at a station, we're doing that at Safety and Justice, and then we're actually having to do some travel to the training center for practical applications. So, hopefully, those will in turn reduce our costs, operationally administrative lost time, and increase our opportunity for more best practices training for our staff. Any questions?
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And then, on the PowerPoint we saw earlier, we're not abandoning any of the stations. It's all renovation, we're changing it to that use, correct?
Yes, this is just ongoing maintenance stuff. As a case in point, we're getting ready to cut a PO for $45,000 for flooring in the station. So, these are just those costs that are unforeseen that come up throughout the year of things that need to be taken care of.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, Jeff Friesner, Recreation Golf Manager. I already covered the specialized equipment earlier. PRO 102 is much the same thing, except specific to swimming pools. With the four facilities we have, we tried to do a replacement schedule for those facilities, and then it includes the replacement of water slides, repair to water slides, resurfacing pool tanks, replacing concrete decks. For this next year, we plan on replacing a portion of the concrete deck at the rec center, the diving board stand at Centennial Pool, and do significant water slide repairs over at Sunset Pool. Any questions?
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. First of all, this is the kind of presentation on budget we like. Clear, concise, just rocked it, home run. I guess my question is, what is, the one thing that keeps going through my mind is we're talking about pool, rec center, all that kind of stuff, and we're talking about capital improvements to the building, and the 2019 expiration of the current Quail Creek or Quail Crossing bond. What are, what's staff thinking? When you guys go back, what's staff thinking about the rec center, about the new pool ice rink? Is it like, oh my gosh, please don't let Bagley or anyone else bring up this project again?
Harold says that, I don't.
Yes, yes. I'm just curious, because if we're going to put a million dollars in the Centennial Pool, for example, you know, we've talked about possibly redoing Centennial Pool. And so, I just, what comes to mind is, what's going on? What are your thoughts? Is it possible, not possible? Where would the money come from? And is a million dollar investment into Centennial a waste?
I don't think it's a waste based on what we know right now, that the draft feasibility study, we presented it to the Park and Rec Advisory Board the last month. They had a number of comments that they wanted to have looked at, so it's not quite ready to come to council. The number for the facility at this point in time, based on the direction council gave us a couple of years ago, is right at $40 million. That includes the competitive 50-meter pool, the leisure pool, and then an NHL-sized ice rink. The earliest, I believe, and Harold, if you have something you want to add to this, is probably 2019 before we could go to that question.
Does that mean to go to that question?
If we would go to a vote to try to bond that facility. Based on, you know, there's always talk over the years that when the debt for the rec center and the museum and the work at Roosevelt Park, when that was paid off, that possibly it could carry forward to pay for the next recreation center.
Then Harold broke the building.
With, and with the current issues that we have in facilities, it makes a lot of sense to repair what we have before we build something new.
Thank you.
So, and there's been, there's been some moving pieces that I think can, could potentially impact in a positive way. So, as we've been moving forward, there has been, there have been, there's one individual that's actually approached us about an interest in doing something in terms of ice rinks. And so, we've had discussions as recently as a month ago, Jeff?
Yeah.
And I think there's, there's really a viable opportunity for this individual to do that. And so, if they're able to, to move in that direction, then that could significantly impact the overall cost of a facility in terms of what we're looking, what we're looking at in that cost structure. And I think there's a good opportunity for a public-private partnership in a different form, because they definitely, they indicated that they're working with large national companies in terms of meeting the demand that exists in this area. The other thing that the individual had that we don't have is connections to existing teams that are struggling to find space. And so, in that world, in terms of the ice, it may actually be easier for them to do it because they can bring players and teams, which brings revenue that can support that structure. One of the things that we talked about here is why he's interested in Longmont is obviously because of our electric rates. One of the most significant expenses you have in running an ice rink is the electricity. And so, you know, that's an ongoing conversation. We have had conversations with other partners and how they look at it. I think it's bringing all of that together, and this is a large project. And when we look at it, depending on how that comes together, you couldn't, it wouldn't need to go to a vote because there's also going to potentially be operational expenses that we're not prepared to handle that will come with it. And so, I think we'll, obviously, when they move through the Parks and Rec Board, we'll be able to go through all of that in more detail with the council.
So, is there a correlation between, you know, when we're presenting what our healthcare costs are, and, you know, it's only going up like, you know, 3.3% per year, when most healthcare plans to cities are going up 7, 8% per year? Is ours so low because we do spend so much more money and promote, you know, health and wellness and physical exercise in other cities? Is that why we're able to help maintain lower costs in healthcare?
That's obviously a part of it. I think part of it also, too, to talk about the work being done in risk management with Sheena and Doug, and, you know, Sheena's made an adjustment in how she approaches it, where she goes to all of the safety meetings and talks about these issues, and then, you know, really focusing on the work that we do in conjunction with Kaiser Permanente in terms of the metabolic screenings that you go through, and just really hitting that wellness piece of the broader insurance plan. Because normally, you know, what you always tend to hear is approximately 50% of your claims are generated by 5% of your population. And so, when you take that, I think it's a lot of the work on the wellness side, avoiding those significant claims, because it's the significant claims that tend to drive your cost up. All of it's connected, though. And as you may know, one of the things is the employees in the rec passes. And so, they use our facilities, and so, all of that is connected to that broader wellness piece.
Well, I definitely have always been a massive user of our rec programs here. I think they're great programs, and I think it's money well spent for a community. That's why I do since. Good job.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, councilmembers, Larry Mills, Golf Operations Manager. Again, we're proposing two CIP projects to be funded in the golf fund. PRO 169, cart path improvement, $60,600. PRO 191, golf buildings rehab, $154,500, for a total of $215,100. PRO 169 is basically our hard surface rehab program. It includes new paths, repairs to existing paths, sidewalks, ADA compliance, that sort of thing. PRO 191, building rehab includes clubhouse interior repairs, clubhouse remodeling, furniture replacement, et cetera. We're trying to make the clubhouse more marketable, both to the golfers and for outside events. So, those are two projects proposed. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I tried to be very brief and concise.
Okay.
So, one of the things that we talked to council about is, you've obviously seen that we put some golf projects in the bond, the potential bond that we've talked about in 2018. And one of the things that we said is that as we're moving in that direction, we also realized that the golf fund, there's work that we need to do internally. And we made the dynamic pricing adjustment. And what are you hearing in terms of the potential additional revenue at the courses?
Through August, our revenue is up over 7%, and our rounds are up over 9% over last year. So, it's a combination of good weather, increased marketing, and dynamic pricing.
And so, we are seeing that performance increase, and we're going to continue working as a group to generate additional revenue. And that's part of the project that he talked about, is because we've also talked about the more marketable you make the facility, you also have the ability to generate other income during the winter.
So, it's dynamic pricing? Is that kind of like that timing use, so if it's really high demand, there are higher prices, and low demand, you try to fill the slots with lower golf rounds?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, they're training anybody that golfs to look at the website, because that's where you're going to find it. And, you know, what I can tell you anecdotally is, we're seeing a lot of folks, part of it may be because of Thorin Creek being under construction, but I know I'm seeing a lot of new faces when I get the chance to go out there.
Councilmember Beck?
Thank you. Just to clarify for me, are these all the golf paths at all golf courses, the facilities at all golf courses? Mainly, it's facilities that you're refurbishing and redoing, or is it specific golf courses?
It includes all three.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm seeing further questions. Thank you very much.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. And this is, I'm going to update you on PBF 178, Council Chambers Remodel, Part Two. So, we're going to, I know, we're going to start this year, we're going to start this year. This is Phase One, and Phase One this year, 2017, is in the operating budget, and that really is replacement of the AV system. For 2018, what this includes is redesign of this entire room. So, that includes the seating, which in some cases is having some real issues, staying seated, the dais, all the different furniture, all those kinds of things. It's in conjunction with the ADA improvements for 2019 construction, which would then add an ADA accessible appropriate ramp and some other things to the council chambers. So, essentially, three parts this year, AV, next year, design. 2019 is reconstruction of council chambers, along with the ADA improvements required.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Does that include a new voting system? Are those a barrier to this?
This year, this year, but this year is voting in microphones. We're going to keep the same TVs, though.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're crossing our fingers on the electronics right now. As you notice, it's, we've been having some issues. I think Dale's next. Before Dale comes up, we did it a little, we did our presentation a little bit different this year, and the reason we did it is because what you're going to find in the CIP is there's a really strong emphasis to maintenance and upkeep in the CIP. There's not, if you remember previous budgets, we tended to have really large projects. This is really more focused on that maintenance and upkeep of the facilities and staying on top of it. You know, a lot of times you see in the CIP, you see 1.4 million for air conditions. You know, the reality of it is, is that's really important for us to focus on and stay on top of it, because if we don't do it, that number can grow pretty fast on us if we don't make those adjustments within our budget, make those improvements on a regular basis. And Dale's going to cover a lot of that. But I just wanted to touch on why it feels different this year, and it's really focused on maintenance and upkeep.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, Dale Rademacher, General Manager of Public Works and Natural Resources. And as Harold mentioned, we're not-
Councilmember Beck, did you still have a question? Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry. Throw off my whole timing on this now. I was going to say, we're not real sexy, but we are necessary. So, you know, Public Works is really sort of the bread and butter of what it takes to run a city, along with my colleague Tom, and of course, Community Services and Public Safety. But it's very capital intensive. I always advise folks that unlike the general fund, which is very labor intensive, these enterprise funds are very capital intensive. And so, the capital program for PWNR for 2018 is about 52.7 million. And the important thing is, that's not including about 35.5 million for windy gap, because that's shown as unfunded right now in your capital program pending the outcome from the windy gap bond this November. So, if the bond passes in November, then the capital program will be about 88 million. So, I'm just going to do a brief overview. There's about 53 projects. I am not going to go through every single one of those, unless you want me to. I was going to go in general areas. And so, in the drainage area, we've got five major projects. It's about $10.6 million. Of course, the largest one is the Resilience Sanfrain Project, and we give you periodic updates on that, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that particular one this evening. In the public building arena, Public Works has about nine projects totaling $3.6 million. Again, the largest one of those now is a little different. It is building new construction projects out at the Public Works Maintenance Facility, in addition to replacing some of the particular facilities out there. And in particular, out there at the Airport Road Facility, we're doing work that will provide for areas for the drying of our street sweeping debris and ditch excavations, which again, are really interesting things, but you need a place to do that. The salt and anti-icing chemical storage building is on its last leg. Again, that was built in about 1991, '92 era, and it has reached its useful life. And the, we're also doing some drainage improvements on the site and some driveway improvements. This is a multi-year project going on out there, and the council may remember, we consolidated what used to be all the utility operations that used to be at the service center with the Public Works operations that used to be out at Airport Road. We've now combined that, so we've really put all of our operations staff out at that one facility. Another project that's in public buildings is the HVAC, and Harold has already touched on that. Again, that's maintaining these air conditioning and heating systems in all these municipal buildings. You can see the buildings that are up for renewal next year, long list of those, many of those that have heavy public presence, including areas like here at the Civic Center and the library and the Memorial Building. Moving over to parks and recreation, open space, there's about 13 projects, $9.2 million. The largest one there is Sandstone Ranch Community Park. It's the last phase of that park, and also continued extension of the greenway. So, again, these are two examples of projects that are actually expansion projects in the parks area. So, the first one is Sandstone Ranch, and if you've been to Sandstone Ranch, you know that the four-plex of ball fields is built. Torreantchee, this is Highway 119 on the top. This is the ballpark area, and this is the sports fields over on the other side of Spring Gulch. So, this project is to build another, almost a mirror image of the four-plex of ball fields that are out there. It'll also include sports courts and associated amenities such as concessions and It'll also include sports courts and associated amenities such as concessions and restrooms. It's a fairly expensive project, but it will sort of really build out the vision of what Sandstone Ranch was intended to do. Another project that we're looking at, finally getting back to after the 2013 flood, is extending the Saint Brine Greenway to its outer limits, if you will, on both the west and the east end of our community. So Phase 12 will take the trail from Golden Ponds, where it ends today, to the west, on the north side of the Saint Brine Creek, out to Airport Road. It'll go under the bridge at Airport Road, and then it will go up along the west side of Airport Road, right adjacent to the, it's this whack farm that the county is currently buying as open space in the future. And then the county picks it up going west from Airport Road out to the Telepons area. And so this is really a collaboration between the city and the county to hook up those two trail systems. I think, I think the long-term vision is that we will ultimately look to get a trail all the way to the Lions area so that you'll be able to have a trail system that you can enjoy for those of you that like to bike and to get out on trails. That's a few years into the future, but I think that's a high goal to get to, and I know it's one that I believe the county is looking at.
So the trail along Airport Road, will that be done next year?
Yes, that's, that's scheduled to, well, let me correct that. David can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're doing design in some of these years and then going to construction. So it may be more of a design in 18, going to construction in 19.
Great, thank you.
Correct, correct. There you go. I should say, I've got folks behind me here that have actually got the answers. I'm really just here to talk.
We go down to this whack farm about every day to get fresh years of corn, so that will be really nice.
That wouldn't be awesome to get out there?
Yeah.
Similarly, out on the east end, we're looking to go from Sandstone Ranch out to Saint Brine State Park, and that's going to be a collaborative effort with State Parks, who will be building the trail from the State Park up to 119. We will be building on city property and the Hayes Conservation Property to go out to the portion where 119 crosses the Seagrave River. I think the challenge on that particular project-
Councilmember Beck, do you have a question?
So many years ago, before Paula Fitzgerald retired, she was talking about a bike path that would go all the way from Hygiene out to Saint Brine State Park.
That is what we're talking about.
Yay, so when do you actually think this?
So the-
Am I going to get to bicycle on this before I die?
Yes.
Good.
It'll be decades ahead of light rail. It's intended, these two segments will be built over the next five years. Again, the one going out east to Saint Brine State Park, the difficult part of this is going to be crossing underneath State Highway 119. There's not a lot of clearance underneath that bridge, and so it may take some collaboration with CDOT and looking at that particular crossing. I think it can be done, but it's going to be a tight fit. And that's also an area where the flood plain is tenuous at best. If you remember the flood of 2013, the river was about a mile and a half wide out there. So, but, you know, you shut the trail down if there's a flood of that nature. Again, the ability, though, for folks to bike out to Saint Brine State Park, I think is going to be a, really a community benefit that will draw people into the area as well as, you know, provide opportunities for Longmont citizens that they don't have today. We're also doing the basic stuff in parks, and you'll remember, we have the $2 a month park fee. And council, you approved that several years ago, and it really was to maintain, we're playing, we're still playing a bit of catch-up on getting the parks facilities up to speed. And I think the other thing that we committed to is that we would not build new facilities without a clear sense of how we're going to maintain them. And so when I was talking about the trails or Sandstone Ranch, we have got parallel dollars coming into the operating budgets to be able to maintain those over time. We didn't do that as well over the last, you know, 20, 30 years. I think we've learned from that to budget better, but we are still doing many park renewals around the entire system. So I'm going to move over now to Sanitary Sewer. Three projects there, about $6.1 million. The largest one there is the wastewater treatment plant master plan improvements. And this particular area is heavily focused on asset management. That primarily being going forward in the sanitary sewer collection system. So this is a map of the sewer system, if you were ever interested in that. It, you probably can't read the detail, but the different colors represent what decade the lines were built. And so they date back to the 1910s, when I wasn't here, up to the ones in the last decade. Essentially, we have about 360-some miles of sanitary sewer. The thing to focus on, though, is we've got about 21 miles that are over 70 years old. And so those are the ones that are going to get the most focus going forward. A lot of that work's going to be in situ form of work that avoids the trenches coming down the streets. We do that everywhere we can. It avoids the disruption to the neighborhoods, and we can typically do it, and else we have a lot of damage in the pipe that prevents that approach. The other one is that we do have ongoing regulatory requirements at the wastewater treatment plant. We gave you an update on that when we talked with you a little bit about some of the funding needs and the sanitary sewer fund. So I won't dwell too much on that, other than to say, when we start bringing those facilities online this fall, we would love to host a tour for council to come out and see the facilities that the Longmont citizens paid for and funded, and why they're important going forward. One of the cool projects that we're doing, and this was included in the, in the bond back in 2013, the $31 million bond for sewer improvements, is the methane reuse project. And, you know, off to the right there shows the flare where we're currently flaring the unused methane that we all generate every day from the bio solids going to the wastewater plant. So we looked at several alternatives, including electricity generation, use of the gas as a biofuel, injecting it into a utility pipeline and letting them, you know, convey it away, and then also supplement the gas by local businesses. We were looking at some of the businesses in close proximity to the, to the plant. The selected alternative, and along with that, was a cost-benefit analysis that we went through, as well as a sustainability analysis to show us which one would pay off in the long term. So the one that we selected was to use it as a biofuel, in particular for the sanitation fleet. And so the project does include the construction of a fueling station out near the wastewater treatment plant for the sanitation fleet. That fleet is scheduled to start being replaced between 2018 and 2021, and we're going to replace them with natural gas fueled by Longmont citizens. So it's, it's a cool project. Really, from a sustainability perspective, I don't know how you get more sustainable than that. It is about $3.6 million coming out of the bond funds and about $3.325 coming out of sanitation. And the analysis we've done, have completed, shows that it has about a seven-year payback to that, to the sanitation fund. So it's a cash flow issue, it's a long-term cost to the, to that particular fund. And so we're excited about that. We are also have just submitted an application that you all approved to DOLA for a million-dollar grant. And the sense we're getting is that they like the project, they see it as a really innovative kind of project that they want to be, be part of as well. So now I'll move to transportation. So we've got about eight projects there, $11.3 million. The largest one there is the street rehab program. That's the sort of, really, the bread and butter of the, of the street system. That's the program that you see torn up streets all around town, as well as all the concrete repair going on. And it is an intensive effort. It's also one that's driven by our pavement management system, and so we're not just going to the neighborhood that wants us to come there kind of thing. We do it based on the condition rating of the streets, and we look at that from a system-wide perspective. And so it's all based on the analysis of the condition of the pavement. We are also implementing the roadway master plan that we brought to you a couple of years ago, I believe it was in 2014. And that's looking at capacity and safety improvements. And if you've driven around town lately, you know there's some congestion on a few roads. Primarily, it's on Ken Pratt Boulevard, and it's on Hoover. And those are two of the roadways that were shown as in need for capacity improvements going forward. And so some of those are starting out, and I'll talk about those in detail a little bit here. We did also take the overall transportation CIP to the Transportation Advisory Board. They reviewed it, and they did recommend approval to the council. And so on streets, again, we've got about 342 center lane miles. That translates to over 700-some lane miles, if you will. The effort that we try to do here is to repair the street at the right time. And what I mean by that is if you catch a pavement deterioration at the right point, you can do things like a chip steal. Now, if you miss that point, and you're off by a couple of years, then you're into an overlay project, and it goes up in a magnitude of cost to do that. You miss that point, then you're into a complete reconstruction, and that's incredibly expensive and something Longmont nor probably anyone can afford to do, which is why staying focused on our, use of our street sales tax is going to be important going forward. Again, we have, I think, made huge headway since the mid-1980s, when the street sales tax was first approved by Longmont voters in keeping our streets in pretty good condition. And I think, I don't know if we're in the right balance, I guess that's for council to decide, but I sort of believe you can spend too much or you can spend too little. And so I think for our condition, we believe we're keeping the rating level pretty constant as we go through the years. And so we're not overspending in a way that would be inappropriate, but I don't think we're underspending right now. But it's balanced, and things that keep that in balance are things like the price of oil and the price of asphalt and those things. And so if we see huge swings in that, that's when you're going to have an impact on your street program. The other thing we're looking at is our pavement management program. So we thought we'd show a picture of Main Street before and after. I hope you all have had a chance to drive Main Street, and I think that in tandem with the two alleyways that we've done on either side of Main have hopefully created a more inviting, more welcoming, at least from a public infrastructure perspective for downtown. You know, it's always going to be difficult when you've got a state highway going right through the downtown of your city, and it's a four-lane highway on either side of your city. But I think Longmont's, again, striking that balance of trying to move the traffic at a slow enough speed that is, that is still welcoming to pedestrians in the area. Just want to talk real quickly on some of the bridge projects that are in the, in the CIP. Ones we have coming up, well, let me step back. The Pratt Street Bridge should be going out to bid, or where did it go? Is it out to bid, going to bid?
They're putting together a back design.
So the bids are going out on that, so you should see construction getting underway this fall out on Pratt. That's going to take about a year. It's going to be similar to the Main Street project. We're going to try to keep the bridge open, the road open as we rebuild, build a new one. Next up is going to be the Boston Avenue Bridge, and that's, as you know, that's up there near where Luton Brewery handles business. It's another major construction on the Saint Brine Creek that will not pass the 100-year flood. Then following that is Hoover, Hoover Road. And there we've got choices. We can either replace and expand the Hoover Street Bridge, or we can do the bypass, the side channel. And I think staff talked with you a little bit about that with the pending annexations out in that area, where we have worked with those property owners to hopefully move the bypass project forward, that then we will not have to replace the Hoover Street Bridge, but we will still have to build another crossing of Hoover Street. And gee, we got a picture of Sunset's Bridge. It's still built, and it's still working.
It's our city's best bridge now, right?
Well, I don't know.
It's one of the things that's pretty nice, too.
Main's good, Martin is good, Ken Pratt's good. That's a great, that's a great point, Mayor. I think we're making huge progress. It's not out of our sight to soon have a day where every bridge in Longmont will pass the 100-year flood coming down to Saint Brine, and few communities, I would dare to say, can say that, so.
We could make a coffee table book about Longmont Bridges.
Bridges? Could be, could be a book. So these are some of the projects that came out of our roadway master plan. I've hit on several of them. So one key one, though, is this, is still this Boston Avenue railroad crossing. We've really got to get that done in order for Boston Avenue to be a continuous roadway from Martin out to 75th. That's, again, that's the long-term vision. That's intended to remove traffic from Third Avenue, from residential neighborhoods that frankly don't want that kind of traffic coming through their, through their neighborhood. Another particular project is out here on the Third Avenue Bridge replacement, and that's really a deck replacement. We did, we did two of the lanes a couple of years ago. We need to do the, I think we need to do the eastbound lanes coming up. So these are two widening projects on Ken Pratt Boulevard. And what's interesting about these is they're not that long. And so on Ken Pratt, you'll remember, we just did a widening project coming from about Main Street to South Pratt Parkway, where we have three-lane cross-sections in both directions, a full three lanes. Our goal, and what the roadway plan told us, is that we've been working towards a three-lane cross-section from really the eastern city limits of the city, coming through the intersection at County Line, down along Ken Pratt Boulevard, all the way out to Nelson Road to where the railroad crossing is. And so this area in green is the area that we believe is the next most logical widening point. We're also doing this project in tandem with the ongoing BRT study that we're looking to try to get bus rapid transit coming out of Boulder of the diagonal. We're doing that in partnership with RTD and City Boulder, County Boulder. And really what we're looking at there is to bring BRT to Sunset Street, up Sunset to Boston, which is why this railroad crossing is important, because then that will get you right into the transit center at Boston and Main. Hoover Road is a pretty obvious one. You know, thankfully, we've got a really vibrant village at the peaks now. I think you're going to continue to see additional commercial development along that corridor, which is, you know, great for the community. It's tax dollars that we need, but frankly, we need to keep our eye on Hoover Road, really from the diagonal up to Boston. And so it's not the entire length of Hoover. We're not trying to push through the residential area. It's really down in this commercial zone, and we're trying to get that done. And then there's three intersection improvements, and these are tricky intersections, very incredibly expensive intersections to rebuild. So Hoover and 119, Hoover and Clover Basin, and Hoover and Nelson. Those studies are underway, and we'll be developing budgets around those and talking with you about that in future years. We're also installing new traffic signals in the city. One is coming up at 17th and Harvard, which I really think will help not only traffic movement on Harvard, but also pedestrian crossing of 17th Avenue. I think it's a bit daunting to try to get across four lanes and do it, you know, with a lot of confidence. The other one we're putting up is out at Nelson and Grand River Drive, and you know that's out near the Silver Creek High School area. Again, another intersection that needs help. Coming up in 2018, we're going to be making improvements to Weld County Road One. We talked with you a little bit about that when you were looking at some of the projects, development projects coming through for multifamily housing up near 17th and County Line. So we're looking at some of those improvements. We're also looking to get a light out at Ninth and Deerwood, same kind of issue, or maybe not. Our traffic studies tell us that it might be a good place. And also doing work on South Pratt Parkway to make bike and pedestrian improvements along that particular corridor. Also, as part of our incentive program with Smuckers, where we're going to be installing a light out at Fairview and Highway 119 that will also assist in getting into Sandstone Park. And so it'll help our city, it'll also help the Smuckers' development going forward. Just clicking on other projects here. So on the, on the area of capacity improvements, I've already talked about it a little bit, so it's really Ken Pratt and Hoover. We're looking at capacity, again, not just sort of doing it on a whim, we're following the roadway master plan that projected traffic needs out to 2035. So it's a- So it's a very long-term look at things. And these were projects that were identified in the 2014 street sales tax election with the public. And so, again, it's our city staying true with what we tell the voters we're going to do with the funds. Quiet zones, we know that's an issue out in the community. We're all hairy about it. As we advise council, we are looking to apply for the next round of DOLA grants. We went ahead and slotted the project out at sanitation and the methane and gas project because it was on a quicker track to go to construction. We are still looking, though, to go after a DOLA grant, in particular down at the First and Emery Project. And so if we're successful in getting that, that will free up some other funds that we would come and talk with you about, what you believe are the best uses of those funds. And there's many competing things. You know, one example would be to maybe look at doing some additional quiet zones in the city. Of course, another one is we've got a railroad bridge that we need to get replaced across the St. Brane. And so, again, if that DOLA grant comes through, and depending on when the bids come in on First and Emery, we're hoping, hoping we're going to be able to talk with you about some options on some of that. The other thing is that we're working on is with the US-36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition to prepare a regional tiger grant for quiet zones. You know, the city of Loveland, I believe, went after a tiger grant, and they weren't successful. We're hoping now that as a regional approach, we'll have more success. Unfortunately, I don't think we know yet what the federal funding level is going to be for the tiger grant. But we are staying with it and hope to get that regional grant put in.
Councilmember Beck?
Thank you. Dale, can you go back to that last slide?
Possibly. Let's see. If I can see it up here. Oh, wait.
Previews? Okay. Just out of curiosity, you're saying you're working with the US-36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition on a regional basis. What else is, would that grant be used for in the region?
You know, I don't know if Sean is still here. I'll prefer that to Sean. I think he's our staff liaison to that effort.
Because the US-36 is what bothers me. Is it going to be for 36 also?
Good evening, Mayor, and also Councilman Peck. Regarding the tiger grant, what we're doing right now, we're just in the preliminary stages of trying to plan that. I'm working with Phil Greenwald. The effort is being coordinated really between Longmont and Boulder, but it's all the cities that are, would be, that are on the Northwest Rail Corridor. And we're all collectively submitting, we plan to all collectively submit our quiet zones. So Longmont has, I think, the most of any city, but Louisville has some, Boulder has some. And people are using different pots of money as match, but as Dale is identifying, we have identified some local matches that would do that. But we think that that regional approach, we've been told by the US Department of Transportation when the mayor and I went to DC, that that regional approach will be much more competitive than if we each individually apply.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. So moving into water, I think this is the last one. I can tell I'm losing you all here. So we have 14 projects, about 11.6 million. The largest one is the Winnie Gap Farming Project. Important note there, and I think I said it early on, is that the current CIP is only showing the funding coming out of the Water Acquisition Fund and the Raw Water Storage Fund. And so there's about 30-some million coming out of a potential bond election that, after the election, we'll know if we have that to put into the budget or not. And if we do, we would then amend it and include those funds. Again, a lot of the focus here is on asset management. This is a chart that our, one of our water engineers put together, and he's, what he's doing here is he's tracking the funding that the city has been putting in to replacing deteriorated water lines across the city. And we do that with a pretty detailed formula. We look at loss rates. We look at the cost of capitalization versus the annualized cost of that. And we try to then time the replacements, looking at both the type of pipe and the age of the pipe. And you can see how those expenses have been going over the years. We've been pretty constant in this 500,000 coming up, and you'll see here we're starting to climb. What's a little concerning is this blue line is what we could be faced with going forward. But I don't want to scare everybody. There's potential in here that it won't be this bad. Because we are not differentiating, I believe, enough between an iron pipe, like a cast iron pipe and a ductile iron pipe, versus PVC. And I'm hoping PVC will last longer. But this really is a 50-year to 100-year replacement program. And, you know, even PVC, I don't think you can go much over 100 and count on it to be reliable every day. I think, I don't know about you, but it seems to me on the news, at least once a week, I see a large water break somewhere, and it's blowing up streets and flooding properties. And we're really doing everything we can to not have that be our condition here. But it is expensive. And as we go forward, I do believe that this is going to continue to climb. I think we're going to get up into the $2 million a year spending rate, and then I'm hopeful that that will be sufficient to carry us. But time will tell. And really, if you start to see a lot greater break rate, you know, you're falling behind the curve. And what I can say is, from the mid-1980s up to now, our annual break rate has not climbed hugely. Which, again, similar to the pavement management, you want to catch that before you've got a complete mess on your hands with breaks happening every other week, especially in a residential neighborhood. So I think we've done a pretty good job on that. But I think it's important to know that, looking into the longer future, those could be bigger costs. And I thought I'd just show you, again, this is our north pipeline. And so this is one of the primary waters, supply facilities that we have. And this here is a cribbing that we installed as staff, not me, but our operations staff, back in the, like, the late 1980s. And we were very frugal back then, because we used old telephone poles or electric poles. Tom, I think he sold them to us at a really low rate. Trying to keep his rates down. And so frankly, they're rotting out. And so we're going to have to replace it. We're probably going to install a gabion wall, similar to what you see up at Bud Rock. Can you go up to the PVC? No, it's steel. This is a steel line built in the 1940s. We're also doing some strategic repairs on different parts of that line, because, again, it is a key line that we need to keep in service. And so it's an interesting project, and some of the stuff may have to be helicoptered in to get it in there. So, again, I invite council, if you ever want to come up and see an interesting project, come up to the north, the north pipeline project.
Walk that whole pipeline from Longines all the way up.
It's an interesting walk.
Yes.
Yeah. And for the life of me, I don't know how they built it sometimes, when I walk in different stretches of that.
First, they caught me on camera, too, when I went by.
Did you walk by this area there? Don't jump. Don't jump hard, you might break the time. So with that, questions? Anything else I can have our staff answer that I can't?
Well, I'd just like to comment on a great job you guys did on the new seal code on Mountain View Avenue. That was done really well. The plates from the neighbors, you said when it was going to be done, and you did it with the least amount of interruption to traffic, and it was a job well done. So thank you.
I think, thank you, Mayor. The staff that we have working on, it's Alden Jenkins and Tom Caparella, and some of our new younger engineers, they are incredibly sharp and talented. And so our future's in good hands with really talented folks.
Yeah. Beautiful job.
Thank you.
Should we take a five-minute break?
Thank you.
Are we done?
Jim just wants to make a quick comment.
Okay, okay. All right. All this way.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, just some final comments. I just wanted to remind you that if there's anything that you see in the budget that you want us to cover in one of our upcoming presentations, give me an email or Teresa, and we'll get it on to the schedule. Next week, we'll not have a lot of budget items on the agenda, since it's a regular meeting. We'll be doing a overview of the, or summary of the general fund and the public safety fund. So a bigger night would be on the 19th, and so we'll try to schedule any other issues on the 19th and follow, any other follow-up on the 26th. But if you see anything that's missing from the schedule, you want to hear about something that we haven't pointed out that's going to be presented to you, let us know, and we'll make sure we schedule that. Otherwise, we're finished tonight.
All right. Thank you. Good job. Now it's time for mayor and council comments. Comments? Okay. City manager, any comments?
No comments, mayor, council.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.